School Board meeting of District 882. We'd like to invite everyone in the audience and watching online to please join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So as we move down the agenda, we'd like to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the agenda from Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes five zero. I also would like to make a notation that Jamie Seaborn is missing this evening, so we are aboard of five. We do have a quorum and can proceed. Citizens comments, I don't believe we have any this evening, do we?
No.
No, no citizens comments this evening. Moving on to agenda item number five, fiscal stability. This is our consent agenda section. For those that don't know what a consent agenda is, we receive these documents ahead of time, have discussion back and forth with the relevant directors as need be if we have questions about them, and then approve them as a group when we come back to meeting. And so I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
About a second for that. So a motion to approve the consent agenda for March the 20th by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Mark Branson. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes five zero. Moving on to item number six, our collaborative connections. We're always really pleased to get to this part on our agenda because this is some of the best work that we do and the most appreciation that we can show. And so I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Olson, Superintendent Olson, to discuss the acceptance of gifts.
Yeah, at this time of the year, we get really busy with our community education run program, the Monticello Fishing Team. And Brendan LeBeau is the community education coordinator in charge of this, and he really gets out there and makes connections and lots of relationships with people in the community that want to support our students and their fishing endeavors. So the program is in its third year of existence and going great. And so here's an example of the community contribution here tonight. Dan Olson, State Farm, $500. Surf Pro of Wright County, $500. Monticello Chiropractic and Therapy, $500. And Minnesota Dark House and Angling Association, $1,250, all going to the Monticello Fishing Team.
One more on there.
Is there one more on there?
It's for pickleball.
Can you roll that down?
Can you scroll that down Gavin, please?
All right, thank you. And Monticello American Legion for $3,000 for a startup funding for the Monticello Middle School Pickleball Club.
So this is an action item, and we do have a resolution for the acceptance of gifts.
Therefore be resolved by Monticello School Board Number 882 to gratefully accept the funding from Dan Olson, State Farm, $500 for the Monticello Fishing Team. Surf Pro of Wright County for $500 for the Monticello Fishing Team. Monticello Chiropractic and Therapy, $500 for the Monticello Fishing Team. Minnesota Dark House and Angling Association, $1,250 for the Monticello Fishing Team. And the Monticello American Legion Post 260, $3,000. Startup on the.
Second.
So I have a motion for the resolution and a second from Melissa Curtis. The motion was from, resolution was read by Member Jeff Hegley. All those in favor of accepting the gifts as listed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes five zero. Continuing with our collaborative connections, we have royalty in the house tonight, and we have a partnership, I don't know if it's really a partnership, it's more of a friendship, between the Monticello Chamber of Commerce and City of Monticello and District 882. And so I'd like to invite the Monticello Royal Ambassadors to the podium. They have a short presentation for us.
I am a Monticello ambassador. Hi, my name is Julie, of 2022, 2023, as a royal ambassador. We work July, July 7th, 2023. You may notice a slight difference in our, we are Monticello Royal, we're a Miss Monticello and princesses of Monticello. The purpose of this is we're equals. We work as a team, but one that's better than the other. Competition through that, we're three equals to go along and do the people here and represent the town all throughout Minnesota, which is such a privilege. That's one change that we've had. Another change is has opened up. Girls, you're taught, the reason for this is so that get to represent the town of Monticello can still live in the town of Monticello. In years past, they've saturated in Monticello. However, they often don't live in the town. They don't get to, can I get to represent this town every single day when we go to school? See Julie and I are seniors this year, so this year when we were able to sit at lunch and talk to people in the hallways, encouraging this program, because the heart of this program is not to be, to be pretty and to wear a dress. Well, those are super fun things, that's not part of it. The heart of it is to build skills like, and representing the town all throughout Minnesota when you go to the town's festivals. A big way that we gain our town, get to know our town better is to participate and volunteer in town. We've done river cleanups, we have things through the share, and many things like that, that we really get to meet people of Monticello, that when we go out into the other town, we can represent Monticello to its followers. Another part of the ambassador is the candidacy. This is March to July, which is when, and which is when we go through, have very different events to prepare to be an ambassador, to see if you are capable of being it, or even if you are wanting to be it. Why you are a candidate, sponsored through a business, a part of the chamber. And this sponsor, you represent the director of candidacy on a staff business, as well as multiple speeches that you did. This is one of the things that helps our candidates and helps us gain public speaking ability. Which for us, because they help our program continue to run and continue to flourish all the girls, even the ones that don't get crowned. And another wonderful thing about our program is that at the end of the parade, we are rewarded with $1,000 in scholarship, which is pretty much shaded and spaced away from the town to say thank you for our duties per se. And what affects me to term here.
Is that it's not about the crown, it's not about being pretty or your poise. We do a lot of community work, and it's a way to, for us to give back to our community and say to say thank you, and kind of finishing off our, kind of our last year at home. And it's been really rewarding to me to go around the community and help out at the senior center in town and involving with the kids. And in our next slides, we have some photos of what we've done. So this is our, at the Excel River Cleaning, we went along, I think it was Monticapi Park along the river, where we picked up a lot of trash.
This is a photo from when we got to go to where all the toys are collected for Toys for Tots, which was such a cool experience to be able to organize them throughout the different age ranges, and to see some of the families come through, and to just see their faces light up, faces that they're a part of this community that are, that may not be able to give their children the toys that they want. But because of Toys for Tots, they are able to get toys at Christmas and to be able to have the Christmas that everybody desires. So it was so rewarding and so just encouraging to be able to see how much the community had come together to get that many toys for children who otherwise wouldn't get a good Christmas.
And this is us volunteering at the local Heroes event back in the summertime. We were serving food and thanking all of our police officers, firemen, et cetera.
This was a more recent photo. We, this winter, we still have parades, even though it's freezing cold and sometimes snowing. Don't worry, we don't wear our heels. But we got to carry the swans that were created through the Monty Arts Program in the Cambridge Parade and in the Monticello Glow Parade. This is a super cool opportunity because our town is known for our swans in the wintertime, and a lot of other towns don't know that. And so we had many people come up to us and ask us, well, why are you carrying such large birds? And it was just such a cool opportunity to be able to tell other people about our town. And even many said, oh, that's such a cool opportunity, I'd love to go there. And it's just bringing people into our town and just showing people the little things that make us who we are.
And this was actually in Cambridge, where we visited their local senior center, where we sang Christmas carols, and we got to know their seniors over there.
This was a fundraiser we did at the local Monticello Culvers. All three of us got the opportunity to go to the St. Paul Winter Carnival, which is a new opportunity for us as ambassadors, because in the past only Miss Monticello was able to go. But because we are three equals and we're able to fundraise enough money, we were able to go to the St. Paul Winter Carnival and be in all their festivities, which is such a cool opportunity. But I think my favorite thing about doing this fundraiser at Culvers was getting to see people that may not go to the big town events, may not know about them, may live out of town, and just getting to see all the faces that eat food just like you and I. And it was just such a cool opportunity to hand out stickers to little kids and just say hi while cleaning up their tables.
And during candidacy, we get to take a self-defense class at the local karate place with Adam. And this was a great way for us to learn how to be safe out in the public as females. And this was one of our first big candidate events, this was at Buffalo's Coronation, and we got to see how the royalty thing kind of goes. I remember I was kind of, I don't know, going with it, didn't know what was going on, but I was really excited for the girls who got crowned that night and the joy that they felt and congratulating them when we got to take pictures with them.
You can also see on our, oop, you can also see on our sashes that those are our sponsors. So for me, it was Monticello Dental Center, they were my sponsor. And so that was one way that I was able to thank them for their sponsorship, was to be able to show their business as I go out of our town. The next picture was a super fun parade. We went to Northfield, and we got to represent Monticello there, which was a super cool opportunity. I've never been to Northfield before. And this parade is one where everyone dresses up in their cowboy gear, so we dressed our float up, and were able to just have a super great afternoon representing Monticello in some nice country attire.
And we also won second place.
Yeah, we won second place, so we're well-known there. Yeah.
And we would all like to welcome you to join us at River Fest July 13th through 16th for all of our festivities. Coronation will be on July 16th, and that is when we will pass up our crowns to our next ambassadors.
And then, there's one more slide. And then.
Yeah, we just want to say a big thank you to everyone that has supported us throughout this year, and thank you to the school board for just allowing us to go into the school those few days and allow. and allow our candidates to be able to have this experience as sophomores, juniors, seniors, and just allow us to have these great experiences. So thank you so much for everyone that's supported us, and we'll continue to support our future ambassadors.
And we would also like to take this time to answer any questions you might have.
I noticed that there's a third girl in the picture, can you...
Yes. So Teagan, she is a senior at the University of Minnesota, and due to her busy schedule, she was unable to make it tonight, but she sends her best wishes.
And she's a graduate?
Yes, she's a Monticello graduate.
A '22 graduate. Anybody else have any questions for the girls?
I'll make a comment. You mentioned public speaking earlier. You both did a great job, thank you so much. What a great experience for you, I'm sure it'll be a blessing in your future. What would you pass along to the next class of ambassadors?
I would just say, like, really enjoy your time, because the year goes by super fast, and it's for, it's already been over half a year for us, and it's felt like yesterday we were crowned, and just enjoying like every little bit that comes your way. For me, I love how excited kids are when they see us. They think, I don't know, they think we're like everything, and it really warms my heart.
I would say for me, I would encourage girls to do it as sophomores or juniors, because I love the fact that I still live in this town as I represent it. It makes it really easy to go to events like this on a Monday night, where as if I go to college far away, I may not be able to attend. I also love the fact that I'm in the know of everything that's happening. I get to see the faces constantly with or without a crown on. And so that's the main piece that I would pass on, is to do it as a sophomore or junior, so that you're able to represent your town while you still live here.
Thank you. Do you have a favorite memory from a favorite event that you've done? I liked the daddy-daughter dance, that was the first year, wasn't it, that they did that? That was amazingly well-attended.
I know like overall, I really like enjoying the dress-up parades where there's a theme. Like we were just in Maple Lakes St. Patrick's Day Parade, and unfortunately, we weren't able to have our float, but we decorated our truck, and we would have, we had our candidates with us, and we dressed up in St. Patty's gear.
I think one of my favorites was the day at Cambridge, specifically the time that we got to go to the retirement home. It was just so sweet to be able to see the people that may not be able to see their family members anymore, or may not have family members, and just be able to sing with them and just create a Christmas spirit that may not otherwise be there. That was super cool for me.
Both of you guys exemplify building relationships, and I believe building relationships is the key ingredient to life, and just hearing you talk about all the different opportunities that you've had, and the smiles that those memories bring, will be a forever memory for me, watching you guys tonight share about your experience. So thank you so much for teaching us.
Thank you. Can you get a quick picture, and then we'll move on to the...
I just had one question, sorry. I may have missed it, but is this just a one-time event? Can you run again? Would you be able to run it next year, or no?
So once, when you're crowned, you aren't able to run again for your city or another, but you are able to run for Aqua Tenio, which you run as a already crowned ambassador, or queen or princess for your city. And since we are all three equal ambassadors, only one girl can go, and that usually goes through another judging process. And then they go through the summer candidacy, that's, it's a lot more, I don't know, vigorous. I know between their three girls, they do, I think, 300 events in a year, which is a lot.
And for candidates, if you are not, if you run through candidacy and you are not chosen as an ambassador, you are able to run one more time and then be judged again. And then after that, you can either be crowned, or you are no longer able to run again. One super cool thing I love about that is that for some of the girls, that it's really out of their box to do this, you see a lot of growth through one year of candidacy. It's crazy to see the confidence, the public speaking ability, and all that goes with that. And so sometimes it takes girls two years to run, but then they'll get crowned, because it, going in when you're super shy, it takes more than a few months. But there's nothing wrong with running twice, and we encourage it, we love to see the growth. And ultimately, it's about growing who you are and being confident in who you are, it's not about the crown.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you ladies, you want to step over real quick?
You're the stars.
Well, I don't know how we're going to top that, but we will. So next on our list tonight, we have our district social worker Sarah Welk, who's going to talk to us about the American Indian Vote of Concurrent. It is not a vote that we need to take as a board, but she's going to explain more about that.
As you said, that's really hard to follow up. They can come and speak for me tonight, because that was really good.
A crown, you don't have...
I don't have a crown, but they said it didn't matter, but...
Come anyway.
You're a fake one, right? Yeah, my name is Sarah Welk, and I'm the district social worker and American Indian Education Program lead. The American Indian Education Program is administered by the Minnesota Department of Education and provides per pupil funding to districts, charters, and tribal schools that report an American Indian count of 20 or more through the MARS, which is Minnesota Automated Reporting Student System. Twenty American Indian students generate a base award of $20,000, and each American Indian student beyond that generates an additional $358. So Minnesota statute requires Minnesota districts, charters, and tribal schools with 10 or more American Indian students to have an American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, which is short for APAC. To be in compliance with this requirement, we are required to submit an annual compliance document to MDE each year, also known as the Vote of Concurrent, as Kathy shared, or non-concurrents. The APAC committee met last week and discussed whether or not they concur with meeting the educational needs of American Indian students. And I'm here today to represent the APAC committee and their Vote of Concurrent to the school board. So afterwards, after the meeting tonight, I will have that document signed by you Kathy and you Mr. Olson.
Is there any questions for Sarah? Okay, thank you so much, Sarah, appreciate your presentation. Moving on to item number seven, Teaching and Learning, we have a couple of exciting updates, one from the high school and one from Eastview. I believe Mr. Dokendorf is going to give us the Eastview Education Center update next. Welcome, Mr. Dokendorf. And team! Make sure your microphone's on there.
I'm Jennifer Johnson, and I'm the Early Learning Coordinator at Eastview. And do we have our slideshow ready? So the past two years, we've worked with Kail Burke with Observable Impact, and this year, we are working on integrity. And so for our team that's representing this tonight is Joe Dokendorf, our principal, and then we have Danielle Hickman, one of our preschool teachers, and then we have Mackenzie Milner, one of our kindergarten teachers.
And I'd just like to take a moment to point out a couple people that are here tonight that had a lot to do with our standards, behavioral standards and expectations that were established about six years ago. I look at Eric Olson, he was the principal of Eastview at the time, and it was very important to him to get that set up. And when Noah and Danielle present, she'll be talking about that. And Sandy Lickte is in the back there. Sandy was really the person who carried the torch the most on establishing those standards for behaviors, and it's something that has kind of had an ebb and flow over the years for how much momentum we've had in teaching the kids about them and keeping them as a priority. And this year, they really came back to full force as we took on our Observable Impact Plan for the year. And so what I'm going to do is simply address the slide that's up right now. Observable impact is a phrase we learned two summers ago as a district. You know, Jen had mentioned Kail Burke as a presenter, who really works on PLCs with staffs across the country and even beyond the United States. But I like to view it as goal-setting more than anything else. And, you know, I've been a principal since I was 26 years old, so a very long time. I've set, I've set a lot of goals with leadership teams and with staff members, but I can't ever remember a period of time where the goals have been so much at the forefront, and something that we've done for the entire year. And that's what I've appreciated the most of the Observable Impact process. Last year, we knew we were taking on a new handwriting curriculum for our students, and a way to really connect preschool and kindergarten students, doing the same types of activities around, you know, early learning with literacy as it relates to handwriting. And we adopted handwriting without tiers, and it has gone so well. I really believe it's because of this Observable Impact process that really required us as a staff to think beyond just the launch, you know, just August and September and what it looks like, but kind of have a year-long plan, and force ourselves to think about, how do we know we're having an impact? How do we know students are learning? What kinds of things are you as teachers doing to make a difference on this topic? What types of things are students doing, and how do you know? And so that's what Observable Impact was all about in year one. The other thing about year one, it was also kind of an experimental year in the process, where we dabbled and just tried to learn the process. Year two came along, and Eric and Cindy really asked us as schools to think about a connection to Observable Impact and our goals with our district vision of a learner. And most of us in here know that the district vision of a learner plan was a plan that was created with countless people from Monticello, the school district, and the community, and determining what was most important to us. Four, four items kind of rose to the top. They were, we wanted our students, when they graduate from Monticello Schools, to be an effective communicator, a critical thinker, a resilient learner, and a person of integrity. And we gathered our preschool and kindergarten staffs back in August and said, "Which of those four do you want to focus on? What do you want to focus on?" And they came up with person of integrity. It's so foundational, it's something that we just really wanted to do. So we sunk our teeth into integrity. And the people that are here today have been real leaders in that process. Jeremiah Mack, our community head director, who works at preschool, has been a real leader in that process. And we're here today to tell you just a little bit about how we've approached integrity and connected it to the kinds of things that we already do.
So, like Joe said, some of the things we already had set up at Eastview before this was the ABCs, which if you walk into Eastview, anyone could tell you what they are. But it's A, always do your best, B, be safe, and C, care for all, which kind of really goes with the integrity lesson that we're trying to hit home. So we had those core morals right away, and we just kind of wanted to go from there and build onto it, so the kids already knew that. The ABCs, and they hear it all the time, we talk about it, like on the announcements, we talk about it in class, they learn about it in specials, like everywhere they hear about these Eastview ABCs. So we just kind of graduated that almost to add on the integrity piece to it. But it really goes hand-in-hand with SEL, so a lot of the things that we do, the Little Spot Curriculum we started this year in preschool, just talking about feelings and emotions, and how that can affect children, and how they can find more positive ways to handle those big feelings and everything. And Pyramid Model, we started this month-long kindness initiative and all this stuff that goes along with this whole integrity piece. And then, we can go to the next slide. So when we talked about it as a team, we kind of met as a leadership team and talked about how we were going to keep focusing on integrity from here on out, and we talked about at staff meetings as a whole group, talking about it. And then when Joe does the announcements, he goes through little snippets at the end of the announcements, so the kids hear it over the loudspeaker, and then also in the bulletin, and just everyone in our whole school talking about it, so the kids hear it. They know Mackenzie put together a really awesome lesson that she's going to share with you. But we all went over that lesson with our class, and it's really awesome to see the kids grow. And now, they may not have known what integrity was before this, and now they do, and they feel really strongly about it, so it's really cool to see. So Ken's is going to share that with you.
So integrity is quite a big word for young children, especially when you're thinking of, our students are three to six years old roughly, and it might seem kind of daunting to teach integrity to a three-to-six-year-old child. So we put together this lesson, if we want to pull that up, and I can kind of show you. Oh, this is the video, if you click into the, that should be a link. Kind of walk you through what the students saw and heard and participated in to learn what integrity means. Okay. Was it? This is a video, this is for afterwards. Yeah. Okay, so I can kind of just walk you through the gist of it then. We started off with the learning target, so that the students would know why they're learning and what integrity means, and then also that they're going to be learning not just the definition, but what it looks like, what it feels like, what it sounds like to be a person of integrity. And then, after we gave the learning target, we moved into giving the student-friendly definition. And our student-friendly definition of integrity was doing the right thing even when no one's watching. And in my class, I say, "Especially when no one is watching." And so then, the theme, oh, here we go. You're going to see the word integrity and hear the word integrity many, many, many times throughout this lesson, because you want them to know what the word is that they're learning, and the definition that goes along with it. So right there is the student-friendly definition, doing the right thing even when nobody's watching. And then we went into giving them examples of how they can show integrity in different areas and different times of the day. So they can show integrity during group time by following the listening rules, tying in our second step, listening rules that they have in preschool and in kindergarten, and then showing them that, an example of what that might look like. Another example, having them repeat, what's the word that we're, that we're learning today? Having them say it and own it. And then giving another example of that we can show integrity during free choice time by sharing our toys and playing together, in another visual. And then, keeping it real simple, visuals, nice and big. What does it look like to be a person of integrity? And then we'd go through, doing your own work, sharing, being calm, helping your friends, always doing your best, tying in our ABCs. Moving on to, what does it sound like to be a person of integrity? Being honest, telling the truth, being assertive, using your strong voice, using your kind words and treating others the way that you want to be treated, and using the appropriate voice levels for where you are in the school. And then, lastly, what does it feel like to be a person of integrity? You feel proud when you're a person of integrity. You feel happy and brave and comfortable, you're helpful, loved. Just getting them to kind of feel those feelings and know what integrity would look like, feel like, sound like. And then after we defined it, gave examples, we wanted to check for understanding. So the next few slides, we probably don't have to watch all of them, but this slide has an example and a non-example. We played both videos, and after each video, they had to give a thumbs up. This is children showing that they are people of integrity. Thumbs down, this is not integrity, we don't want to act like this. We don't want to act like this. So if you want to click through the two videos. And they would just watch and decide, are those students doing what they should be And are they doing what they should be doing? The kids had a great time acting this out, and they knew that it was just for a lesson. They loved it. But they were pretty good at noticing, like, those students are being students of integrity, people of integrity, or they're not. And then this, what these two are during free choice time, so that they can see that integrity is not just during work time, it's during free choice time as well. And we can click to the next one. We don't have to watch the videos. And then this one is moving from their, from other parts of the room into the circle, showing an example and a non-exemple. And it could go on and on. You could make videos about the hallway, the lunchroom. And then we finished it off with giving that definition one more time. Integrity means doing the right thing even when no one's watching. So that was the lesson that we provided the students. And then teachers extended it, like we were talking about before, with connecting it to the ABCs in our second step lessons and the Little Spot lessons, connecting it in all the kinds of ways, and then also connecting it to the behavior in the moment. So if a student was running in the hallway, you could ask them, are you showing integrity right now? And they can tell you yes or no. So, and I've, I am in a very high-traffic area in my classroom, and so a lot of times when I'm sitting in my classroom, when my kids are at specials, I can hear other classrooms moving throughout the building. And I just love hearing other teachers connecting integrity. And I know they're not just doing it in the hallway, they're doing it all over the building. So it's really neat to see. And we have a little video to show some examples of how our students are showing integrity around our building.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do they have weekly lessons that if we were to post, got posted in the five shuttle buses? Or are they monthly lessons, or are they daily?
Yeah, so this one particularly was a one-time lesson, but it's continually revisited for integrity. So once they've had the lesson, then the teachers will make connections. And I would imagine too, if they needed to pull up the whole lesson again, or teach it again, if they're having a whole group concern, that they could do that as well.
I do have one idea that I can assign to the next principal.
Watching this, I'm thinking, if we put the ABC up in every bus, that helps everyone. But the integrity, one, on the shuttle buses certainly would mean a lot, because it means more to the little people.
Yeah.
But if it was a weekly thing, or you were working on it this week, hey, let's put it in the bus, so they get that extra 15, 20 minutes of that in front of them that time.
We could share some of our SEL lessons, too.
Or even give them ABC awards on the bus.
Yeah.
I mean, we could, we could give you guys, like, we give them, the little papers that you saw them holding with the ABC on the top are ABC awards. So when they show their ABCs, any person in our building can give the students those little cards, and then they get hung on the wall. It's pretty special, because they don't get them super often. So then when they walk by, they see their name on the wall, but maybe we could give some to the bus drivers, and then if they're outgoing above and beyond, they could receive them on the bus.
I was thinking bus rules. If they learn their bus rules, they get that, give it to the bus driver, their name goes on that front bulkhead. So their name is up on there when they learn their bus rule, their name goes up there.
I think what we just saw was amazing. That was collaborative connections, like organic, right there in the boardroom. That was really cool. Thank you, Joe.
I would say it's good.
I think that's amazing. That's a fantastic idea to connect.
I also like the fact that it's school-wide and not just one classroom, so it'll carry all through the whole school, so I think it's well done.
When Mackenzie made the presentation, we had talked about wanting everyone to be on the exact same page, so she had made that position, so everyone could be on the very, teaching the very same thing. So as they go to kindergarten and beyond, they're knowing the same verbiage and everything.
I just really look up to you guys for being the first ones to tackle what, when we went through the process selecting the vision of a learner. But a lot of people struggled, should we even have integrity? Even, was it age-appropriate? And you chose the one that was probably the most difficult. But if people in society grab on to integrity as a core character trait, a lot of our, a lot of our world's problems are solved. Really, when you look at your videos, students can behave usually when the teachers are watching, right? Or they can make good choices, I should say. And what we do when we don't think is anybody watching is normally when problems happen in our, even when it's our own life, lives of others. So I just think you tackled one that I think showcases for all of our leaders, all of our, our staff members across the district, that that is one that can be tackled by our youngest learners. And if they get it, and compounded over years of working at this together, what's our world going to look like here in Monticello? Pretty excited. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. That was amazing. And we're excited to see it, you know, continue into the elementary schools and beyond. So come back and tell us how it's working next year, or whichever attribute you choose next time. Anybody else have any comments or questions for our Eastview team?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So moving on, we're going to be hearing from our high school team, our co-principals, Matt Colwell, Lori Hansen, and Becca Conkle will tell us about the, I'm sorry, I fumbled your name there for a minute. Tell us about our new course offering that we have at the high school.
And we'll introduce Becca in just a minute. I think on behalf of Matt and I, if we can just recognize Julie and Lexi, and Tegan, who's not there, they represent some of our finest, and it's very humbling for us to see our students lead. And that's truly what we try and find, is just any opportunity that kids can forge their own path, and they obviously spoke very well, but they represent us very well. So on behalf of Matt and I, we're just very pleased that you are who you are, and they do that in our building every day. That's very natural. And we just, those opportunities for our kids to lead just are above and beyond anything that our whole system is doing. So just publicly thank you for both of you, for just the day-to-day character that you show, but also just the leadership in stepping up here. So a big lift, so we recognize that.
Yeah, well done. Appreciate, and the segue from that, too, the work that happens at those early ages, we appreciate. There's a lot of lessons there that our kids could still use at the high school. I want to don't my mouth so bad there, just to say, yep, send us that, we'll take the ABC. We'll take all of it. And yeah, what you do when people aren't looking is pretty, pretty big deal, even at the high school and in society, like Mr. Olson mentioned. So thank you for having us back. We are continuing to kind of go through this process of evaluating our offerings across all departments. In every way, shape, or form, every class that we offer, we want it to be relevant. We want it to be meaningful to students today, not back in 2010. And we don't want to keep doing the same thing that we've always done. And Becca's a big part of that now, is we kind of are rebranding the means by which we go looking for other opportunities. We talk a lot about pathways and CTE classes and different things we even presented last fall. We're still working on, and that's work, it doesn't happen very fast. There are some things, there's a lot of pieces and parts that are moving in that with regards to, obviously, grants and different things. Just as a quick update, we're still waiting to hear back from Home Depot. We submitted that grant back in November, Atlanta, is their corporate headquarters. They still have it, we haven't heard back. But we know we want to offer that as soon as we can, or maybe it's even, it really is next fall, but we are still waiting. So there's, it's a slow process sometimes. And then certain opportunities come up like this one, where Becca's, she's got a big foot, she can kick the door down and get into a spot pretty quickly and really be pretty efficient with what she can offer. So a lot of kudos to her, she'll do a lot of explaining in a bit. But we just appreciate your support, because we know we have students that are interested in the healthcare field, for example, that go to Wright Tech, and that's a good spot for them to go. And then we know we have students that are interested in the healthcare field that don't want to go to Wright Tech, and maybe we can offer that through our, our school. And we want to meet both groups and do our best to do that. So that's what we're looking at, kind of doing here.
And I think as Matt had talked a little bit, we're continuing to look and evaluate just opportunities, and you've heard us say pathways and programs. We're looking for very purposeful, intentional opportunities to give kids real-life experiences. Nine through 12 have, you know, even probably going back into the middle schools, having them start to evaluate what their interest areas, what their passion, and how does Monticello High School then support and open doors of opportunities that, not only in that really core foundational curriculum, but also that those internships, externships, on-the-job experiences, just everything. So we're really trying to be very mindful, purposeful, and intentional in what we do and how we build. As Becca is here today, the other pathway coordinator that we have is Tony Chido, and they just are leading the charge in what we're doing here. So we come to you again, this is an opportunity that was presented. Becca will talk about the, the real details of the opportunity. It's a pilot program through St. Cloud Tech and Community College. So we're here tonight knowing that we want to have ourselves ready, so that when St. Cloud Tech is ready to go, we can partner with them very seamlessly. We feel like we're in a good spot with some of our understandings, our planning, and we just want it to be in our back pocket, that as they are finalizing their details, as they're going through and understanding, taking care of all the things that they need to get in order, we can jump on board as part of this pilot and really be ready to implement hopefully next year at some point, if not possibly the year after. So we know that we're here on the front end of it, but we also think there's some opportunities that we don't want to miss out on. Becca's going to talk real specifics, what it looks like, but I think the other part, as Matt had alluded to, is this is not in lieu of Wright Tech. This is truly, as we had shared when we were here a couple of months ago, this is to diversify as many opportunities and programs for our students as possible. So we certainly have an allocation that we have with Wright Tech in the different areas at their, what they offer. But we also know that there's a large number of students that it fits or doesn't fit, and we feel like we can be very mindful in who we, and how we serve our students in the different areas. So one thing that's important for us as we share tonight and then walk away of, this is not in any separation or abandonment of Wright Tech, it truly is trying to diversify as much as possible, because we feel like we have students that need a number of different avenues this would be in addition to. So by moving forward with our, our MH version, version of a CNA course, we are not taking, we feel like there's a niche that serves that student well, and it serves the student well also. So we want you to hear that loud and clear as we go through and present tonight or anything in the future.
All right. So just to give you a little bit of background, as Lori said, St. Cloud Tech and Community College reached out about three months ago or so. Susan Jordal is the Director of K-12 Outreach Program, and she was looking to see if there were districts in the area that would be interested in kind of joining this group to be able to offer this to our students. So all of the details I'm going to give you right now are tentative until everything is finalized. But what that would look like would be a one semester class, one hour a day, and then in addition to the one hour a day, the students would need 16 hours of clinical experience. On that, we have partnered with St. Benedict's Senior Community, which is located between St. Henry's and Home Depot. So that's where the students would go for their 16 hours of clinicals. That would take place outside of the school day on a timeframe that would be agreed upon by the instructor and the students. So the instructor would be at St. Cloud Tech and Community College, the students would be joining the class synchronously online. And it looks right now like each district would be able to have about 10 students involved, because that instructor would have to be in person for that clinical time. If they go beyond the 10 to 1 ratio, then you need an additional instructor. The idea with getting the CNA license is that we would want the students to be able to use that license, because if that license is used within that first year, the company or the business that they are working for legally will have to reimburse them the cost of obtaining that CNA licensure. So we would like the students, if possible, to take the course. But then also, I run the youth internship program to place them in places around the community that need certified nursing assistants, so then they would be able to actually apply that and build that for them. Questions?
Great opportunity. My daughter's a CNA, but she took it through Anoka Ramsey. She was one of those students that didn't want to go to Wright Tech. And so she took it through Anoka Ramsey, and now, I mean, the opportunities for kids, for a part-time job as a CNA is like, she worked at St. Benedict's for a year, and the opportunities for her to work there and the pay for school students outstanding. So, I mean, I think you're helping the community, because they have tons of needs, but they can't fill the positions over there.
Correct.
So I think it's a great opportunity for kids that can still, that, they want, excuse me, they want to stay at the high school, and, you know, they don't necessarily need to get in nursing, if they just want a great summer job or part-time job, it's, that's a great opportunity to. And they're, St. Benedict's is so willing to work with those kids. I mean, they're like, once a week, fine, you want to work three times a week, fine, you only work weekends, that's fine, whenever you can use you. So I think it's awesome.
I think we get to this point because we're listening to a number of things. Becca and Tony are very modest in what they do, but they're in front of all of our kids from eighth grade all the way up through a number of different courses that we offer, truly trying to get a pulse and get the feedback from what our students are telling us. So there's an interest in our high school for the healthcare field that we just aren't serving well yet. It's something that we're well aware of, it's something that their voice is loud and clear to us, that says there's a demand by our students. Obviously, there's an industry demand, I think, as Jeff just shared a little bit. So we're always trying to listen very carefully and analyze very critically to say, is this, how do we build this? What does this look like? This is one step in what we think we can incrementally build in healthcare options that apply and are relevant to our kids right now, that can translate into a wide variety of fields. And that's what we're trying to do, is truly broaden the exposure that our kids are receiving. This is just one step that I see us coming back to you a couple of different times over the next year to say, here's, here's now the next layer to what we think we can do. Because it's two big stakeholders, our community and our students. And this is a way for us to make it work internally with a lot of value added to our kids' education.
Couple of things in the hopper, one, another class within the fire department, and then looking at the science department as well, with what their offerings are, and anything human anatomy or physiognomy, related sports medicine, there's, there's students that want that stuff, so.
Nutrition.
Lori alluded to nutrition. We have some passionate teachers, who I think will be excited to get their hands and maybe build some curriculum, and we know we've got students who really would benefit and appreciate it, too.
I have a couple of questions. So the, this would be a synchronous course taught by St. Cloud Technical Faculty, and would the students be eligible to take their certification at the end of one semester of this course?
Yes.
And is there money? Because I know there's a fee associated with that.
Can I talk about the grant?
Yep.
Okay. Yes, so at the end of the one semester course, they can take their Certified Nursing Assistant Certification Test. That test right now costs $225, I believe. So, let me go back. So once Susan Jordal found out which districts were interested, or how many districts were interested, she did let us know about, a month ago, that she had applied for a Perkins Grant that would actually cover the cost of the whole program for the first year, and for the second year, it would cover 50%. Excuse me. We received a YST, so the Youth Skills Training Grant. We had applied for the medical grant, which we received. And so the balance of that 50% would be covered by that grant for the second year. And then the idea going forward with that is looking for And then the idea going forward with that is looking for partners that may be willing to cover the, the cost for the students in order to take those courses. But the students ultimately after year two would be responsible for paying the $225. But again, if they're placed as an, as an intern with a business or a company, that money would be refunded to them by the employer.
I'm a healthcare professional, and one of the things that I found out recently is a lot of the bachelor prepared nursing programs are requiring students to have their nursing assistant certification before they can even be part of the bachelor's prepared programs. So I see this as a real benefit. Most of the students, in my understanding at Wright Tech when I was speaking out there, are actually seeking a nursing degree. They're, they're not terminating at the nursing assistant level. So this is a way for them to, that course would cost them about $3,000 if they had to pay for it out of their pockets. So this is real value for any student that wants to continue on to nursing school. I think this is wonderful.
And the students would receive the three college credits for this course.
Yeah, I think it's an excellent opportunity.
I love it too. I think it's outstanding. I think it's what a lot of the, the students and the community, the parents are, are looking for is some more of the, the real, what are we going to be doing after high school training? You've talked a lot about hearing that this, this is what the students want. Can you tell us a little bit more about how you're hearing that from them?
We use from sixth grade through 12th grade, we use a system, a program. It's called Minnesota Career Interest Inventory. So throughout the course of those six years, students are taking a variety of interest inventory, career inventory, online tools that we can get the results from. And so the Career Interest Inventory, they take in ninth grade and 11th grade. Right now, so all of our 11th grade students have taken that. And it's showing us that 18% of our juniors have an interest in having a career in the health field. Ninth graders, 15% of them are looking for a career in the health field. So that's where we're getting our information.
Do you know those numbers from years past to say that that's typical of the ninth graders and 11th graders? Or is it maybe increasing?
I, I only have access to the current information that's in the system.
And I think Becca and Tony, in coordination with our school counselors, our social workers, just kind of our internal staff, I think she's being a little humble in regards to the, truly the pounding of the payment that they're doing. So they're gathering data from all sorts of avenues. It, it might just be, say I had a conversation with so-and-so in the careers class, and they are digging into that student, what are you interested? What do you do? What can we help you? So there's a lot of data that is at our discretion. But there's also a lot of one-on-one that says, help me understand where you think you are. Now, do you know that we have this, this, or this? So I think that's the other part of it. And then they're very resourceful in saying, we're not on the front end of this at all. And they are working with other districts to say, what are you doing? How are you figuring this out? Where's your, what does it look like for you? What can we steal from you to really implement and build here? What worked? What didn't work? So there's, from both ends of it, they really are in front of kids at every opportunity they can get. If it's during our flex time, if it's in careers classes, if it's coming down to the middle school. I would like to think that a year from now, we'll be able to answer that question better because I think what we're doing is putting language around ideas and interests for kids that maybe didn't have that language or know of that opportunity. And, and not to anyone's fault, but we just have just so much more information and opportunities at our, at our door that we get to really kind of bust it open and build it for them. So I would love to say a year from now, we'll tell you that number is whatever it's going to be.
Super. Thank you.
I don't think you're going to have any problem getting 10 students. Are you going to do like two semesters, one like twice next year? Would that be the plan or just one semester?
As of right now, St. Cloud Tech is proposing a one semester.
Okay. Yep.
Yeah, that was, that was going to be my next question is, you know, year one, year two, year three gets going. What's the, what's the scenario if you have 18 people that want to try, you only have a spot for 10? Something that needs to be thought about.
And, and we're very, we've got ideas of what that may or may not look like. I think we need to get into it to year one and then work very closely with St. Cloud Tech and Community College to say, this is, this is our demand. And I don't know prepared for that, but I think those are the opportunities and the conversations. Not only with St. Cloud Tech, but I don't want to negate the Wright Tech opportunity as well. So between the two of them, how do we capitalize every spot available for students?
And/or Anoka Ramsey or anyone else that offers these opportunities because as, I mean, they're competitive. And St. Cloud Tech's going to be out front. Some of the others will want to catch up and do the same thing. Access to our students is a big deal to them. That's quite an opportunity for the schools as well.
Anyone else?
Well, this is an action item for the board, and so we had discussion first. Now I need a motion to approve the new MHS course offering.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Melissa Curtis to accept the new MHS course offering, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes five zero. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
We appreciate just your time and just letting us share what we want to continue to build for our students. So please know that we're very grateful for that.
I would like it if you'd come back next year, you know, when you've learned a little more and tell us more.
We'll be back.
Thank you.
See you in a month.
All right. Moving on to innovation and leadership. We're going to have Superintendent Olson is going to give us an update on something you may have read about and heard about in the community that was in the newspaper as well, about a city-state partnership, or a city-school district partnership for looking at some of our collaboration down the road. So I'm going to have Superintendent Olson give us an update on that.
Just as part of board business here tonight, I think it's important to give an update, especially seeing as how an update was in the paper here recently. As far as a city-school collaboration goes, we will continue our monthly collaboration with the city and always looking for different ways to partner together. I think it's really important for a vibrant community to have vibrant schools. And that part isn't going to go away. We've been doing that for four and a half years. And then as far as the RFP process goes, that started last fall, all the way through early 2023 with new board members. And we were collaborating on a potential RFP process that would contract a company to come in and do some strategic planning with us. Through that process and through that planning, we realized that where the city was with the amount of work that they had done in a 2040 research planning effort and where we are after having our last referendum be in 2015, we had really accomplished a lot of the planning that was part of that strategy when it comes to building. And we right now need to catch up in, in some of the facilities planning that we've done. So we're going to be partnering with another school district and just watching them, how they do business as far as the facilities planning goes. That doesn't mean that we're not going to continue to do collaboration with the city. That doesn't mean that we're not going to do our own strategic planning like we do every year. We connect our strategic goals. You saw evidence of that in both Eastview Education Center and the high school as they connect things. One was connecting our career pathways to the student, student's future. And one was connecting more of that character, education, or the, the vision of a learner. So, so just a quick update that the collaboration's going to continue with the city. That's important to a thriving community. But the RFP process effort has stopped. We are not going to be part of that. They are moving forward on their own, and we are moving forward in a different direction, I would say, to do some catch up in, in, in our facilities planning.
And I think I would add to that, that we had a wonderful, several meetings working together. We all understood each other very well. It was not in, there was no animosity or anything. I just want to squelch any rumors about that. We really were just at different places in our planning. And I think you characterized it very well, that we have, we have some work to do. They're a little further along on their long-range plans than we are. And it's a lot of money, and we're trying to be good stewards of the tax dollars that are out. So we made a decision to pause. Any, any additional comments? Okay. Moving on to item B, we're going to have a legislative update. Superintendent Olson and I spent the morning at the state Capitol today with 175 other superintendents and school board members. And I'm going to let Superintendent Olson start discussing.
I'm just going to ask everybody not to look up at the flyer at all because I want to make a couple of points. Pretend that it's hidden right now. But in the media right now, you'll hear about two very important bills. House Finance 439 and Senate Finance 448, which talks about the increase to the basic formula of 5% each year of the biennium. That's a really big one for all school districts across the district because it, it gives unprecedented amount of money coming in to school districts and allows you to have more, more local control with that amount of money. So you hear, you hear that one, and then you also hear cross subsidy. So there's an effort in House Finance 18 and Senate Finance 28 to fully fund district special education. This has never been done. And, and so what ends up happening is districts have to subsidize the special education costs from the general education. And just as a reminder, all students are general education first. So this isn't a us versus them scenario. It's every student is a general education student first. But what ends, when unfunded mandates come across, whether it's through the federal government or state government, and when they aren't funded at a level that allows consistency across a district and there are disparities with student needs and costs, then it is important for districts to dip into the general fund to meet those needs of every child. So you don't want to say every kid every day and not try and meet those needs. In, in special education, we meet those needs through the individual education plan process. And so you'll hear those two being really big funding mechanisms, and they're great. They're, they're amazing, and it really could change education. But I'm going to put up the flyer now and really just start diving into some of the specifics that are part of other bills down there. And so I want to be very careful as you look at this flyer, and we'll have it posted on the district website. But there are things that in principle are amazing, just like when special education came in. That's what we all want as educators. We want there to be funding for every student's needs. But when it isn't funded to the level that, that, you know, the costs versus the, or the needs versus the amount of allocation coming in, that, that starts the pitfall of funding in districts. And that starts the school district in motion to maintain a fund balanced policy, make cuts, and do things that they would rather not do as they serve all their students. So while you look at this flyer in depth, hopefully everybody goes back and digs into it. Hopefully people dig into many of the House files and Senate files and different bills because it's important. Everyone's advocacy, whether it's a school board member, whether it's a community member, whether, whether it's an educator. It's, it's really our voices, and it's not superintendent's voices, it's not board chair voices. It's got to be a community voice standing up. And, and we were told that advocacy should start today all the way through the end of legislation. This is at a good time. You'll start hearing targets at the state level of, of what, of the amount of money that they have for education in different pots of, that they're having each of these bills. But as you can see, as we look at Monticello's story, if some of these bills were to pass as they are, we could end up not seeing that five and five. In fact, we, we could end up being on the losing side of funding. And, and you wouldn't think that with all the hype of five and five and the hype of cross subsidy. And that's how important it is to really dig into what's really going on down there. So for example, I'll just give a couple of examples, and then I'll let Kathy chime in because she's very knowledgeable when it comes to the funding concerns of the, the education in the state. So I'm just going to read the, take a couple of examples here. But what will happen if state mandate changes without funding? The total costs associated with implementing the numerous education's bills on the table will rise well into the millions of dollars annually. Without significant additional funding tied directly to these mandates, Monticello and districts across the state will be forced to pare down other areas to meet new mandates, taking opportunities away from the students and likely taking jobs out of the district. So by, if, if everything were to pass as is, we would not be the winner that you are, that we are all made to believe we are when we hear the five and five and cross subsidy. All the different components would cause us to go right back to the cut table. And that's something that we want to avoid. And so becoming privy and an expert of these bills is going to be important for everybody. I don't know how in-depth, I don't want to go too in-depth here because I also want to be careful that nobody walks away thinking that I don't think these are important. They would, they are important, but they has to be, there has to be funding with anything that comes through the pike of legislative process.
I can chime in with some of the mandates to give an example because you're probably thinking, what kind of mandates are they talking about? So two standalone bills that have passed out of committee that are on their way to be rolled up in the omnibus bills are a requirement that every district offers financial literacy to 11th or 12th graders, depending on whether you're talking about the Senate or the House bill. That means we offer that in our high school, but it's an elective course that students can choose to take. That would become a mandated course. That means 100% of our students would have to take that. In addition to that, there's a civics course that's being mandated that is different than a, it's a standalone course, separate from government and history and that sort of thing. That would also be a mandate. So that's, when you talk about 11th and 12th graders, just those two courses alone, they would have to take additional courses, and that would potentially put them in a position where they could take fewer electives or have access. Maybe they couldn't take, banned their senior year or industrial arts or, you know, nursing assistant course or something like that. We would have to start to pare down the elective offerings that we have for 11th and 12th graders to accommodate those unfunded mandates and hired teachers. Say that fairly accurately. So that's just one example of an unfunded mandate. Do we think students need financial literacy? Absolutely. Does everybody think a civics course is a good idea? Absolutely. But everything has, it's a trade-off one way or another. There's a lot of labor bills that are also moving through with health insurance criteria on them that will cost us an enormous amount of money if they pass. Do we want people to have better health insurance? Sure, we do. But again, it's unfunded. Where's the money going to come from? What are we going to have to trade off? And the reason we're telling you this tonight, and this was my urging to have this brought to the table tonight, is I really think it's important that the community understand this because when the five and five or four and two or whatever it is passes, it's going to be a joyful time because we have more funding. But if these also pass in their current form, and many of them look like they are on the fast track to pass, it's going to create a dilemma at the bargaining table or at the, at the bargaining table as well as at the budget table. Some of the things are being tied to contracts that we used to have inherent managerial right on. That's going to add a cost. So there's just a lot of things that we want to try to communicate to the community that we're on top of it. Superintendent Olson testified in committee last week. Tina Burkholder, our Director of Business Office, testified in committee, met with legislators, were as involved as we can possibly be for a very small district. And we're hearing the same thing from neighboring districts. You know, they've, they've got the same infographics and things, handouts that we do, and they're in the same position. They may gain millions of dollars but lose millions of dollars all at the same time. So I guess I'll just open it up to the board for any additional comments or questions on that. It's kind of a Debbie Downer topic. But there's a lot of good things happening. The school lunch program passed. A lot of people are very excited about that. However, every district in the state has unpaid lunch bills, thousands of dollars. And that's not going to be made whole to the district, so we have to pay for that too. So these are the realities of budgets and we have to pay for that, too. So these are the realities of budgets, and I believe as a board member that if I have information, you should have it, too, as members of the community, so that if we do have to come back for a referendum or something, at that point, at least you know that we haven't mismanaged the money they haven't even given us yet. So.
I think that mismanaged piece is always a good piece to keep telling your story. I mean, we have one of the leaders in the state of Minnesota, and Tina Burkholder, as far as finance goes, she's looked upon as colleagues across the state. That's why she's testified at both the House and Senate committees. I mean, so, you know, that's...
She's the legislative liaison for her entire business office group in the state. She's right here in our district, so I really want to sing her praises.
And I wish, you know, as you, as board members, some of you are really diving into special ed as we had meetings just earlier. I think it's important to keep advocating for our students and special education, but it's also important to advocate for the funding that goes with that. It's ironic, or I don't know if that's the right word, but I'm going to use it, that, you know, when we ran an operating levy, asked our voters two years in a row, the amount of money that was going to be generated was about $3 million, and that's the amount of money cross subsidy that we dig into our general fund every year. So just by fully funding what is a mandate, we would probably have been able to control our own checkbooks with the current existing mechanisms as they sit right now. So I know that we're doing the right things funding-wise, but it's just, like everywhere across the state, just the funding to keep up with the rising inflation is not... Has not been suitable. For example, the inflationary hole for our district is around $7 million. Said differently, since funding last kept up with inflation, the gap for our district is around $7 million. And so over 20 years, that we feel like there hasn't been an inflationary mechanism. That's $100 million to our district in just 20 years. We ran some numbers with a district like-sized with us, and we are finding that over that 20-year gap, that's about what we've been short. And our people have felt it for years. I look across the audience here, and had to work with a lot of people, got to work with a lot of people, but had to go through the hard process of cutting. How many years? I mean, it felt like, as a principal, we cut every year that I was here, and as superintendent, now we've cut three out of four. So it's hard. You don't want to be in those modes, because you feel like structurally you've cut everywhere you can. And it's just one of those things that we hope that is right-sized this year, but we also hope that they don't right-size so much that they overpolicy and overlanguage. What they have going is pretty good in those first two bullets that I mentioned. And so hopefully, they don't go too far where else, and it starts not allowing us to do the work in the incremental stages. Like I said, all those things are great, but you've got to plan for them incrementally. You're asking Ms. Hanson, and the principals of Mr. Colwell and Ms. Conkle, "How are you going to... What are you going to do in the future?" Well, when we don't know our funding from year to year, it's hard to have answers like that. They have to walk a dance each year to make sure that they are able to sustain what we start. And so questions like that aren't as easy when you're underfunded.
Cross subsidy that they're talking about, one year, do they kind of...
They're hoping to tie it to inflation, but there's not a lot of will to that. That's what I heard.
Cross subsidy is basically a one-year. I mean, obviously, it helps for one year when it comes back.
Tina, did you have anything that you would want to add to... No, that's okay. Would you want to add anything to the cross subsidy, or anything that's talked about through legislation or through conversation here tonight?
So with MasBo, we did a survey to any school that wanted to participate on what the cost would be for some of these labor mandates. And we only had about 120, 130 respond. We took a couple of the outliers out, and from about 120 schools that respond of the things that we asked about, the average overall cost for all those mandates, a minimum, was $1,600 per pupil. And so what 5% and 5% do is about 340 in year one, and another 340 or 350 in year two per pupil. So there's a big gap between what 5% and 5% give school districts versus what some of these mandates are costing per school. So again, great things. I would love to give, you know, People the World, be Oprah. I mean, wouldn't that be great? Instead of being the Debbie Downer every year with budget reductions, but somebody's got to pay for this. So that was our overall theme and what we're trying to get with that survey, to let people be aware of.
That's awesome, Tina. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. So, moving on to our next topic, safe and healthy culture. We're going to leave behind budget for a little bit and get to second reading of policies. He logged out, so give him just a minute. We've been sitting here too long.
All right. So we have two different... I'm sorry, we have one policy here, the Student Discipline. We pulled that for a while back in December, just to do a little bit more work on it. And the Policy Committee has done that work. Buildings feel ready to move this forward, as it's part of our student handbooks, and Policy 506 is ready to bring to you tonight after second reading, in hopes that we can get this policy updated in our policy manuals.
Does anyone have any questions on Policy 506? Okay, so we will see Policy 506 again at the April 3 meeting for final approval?
This is second reading.
Oh, it's...
This is second and final.
There's no action listed here.
It should be an action.
It should be an action item tonight. Do we have to go back and amend the agenda to make it an action item?
No. Someone has to...
Okay.
Make a motion to approve Policy 506.
Second.
Motion brought by Jeff Hegley to approve Policy 506, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes five-zero. Policy 506 is approved. And I'll entertain a motion for adjourning.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made by Casey Root to adjourn, seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no, and we are adjourned. The motion passes five-zero, and we are adjourned at 7:23. Thank you, everyone.